And to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Note that the, we've already noted that everyone's present on the City Council, as you could see before the start of the closed session. Today's meeting is broadcast live on Charter Communication, and the technician involved is Lynn Dutton. It'll be rebroadcast at 1:00 PM on Charter, Channel 71, and also on Wednesday 8:00 PM on Saturday. Okay, so, we have some presentations recognizing some volunteers of our advisory groups. One of the strengths of Capitola is we have so many people that do volunteer, and we're all very grateful, and I'm sure everyone that volunteered was very happy to do so. So, Linda, please.
Yes, we have members from a number of committees. Please feel, join us up front. I'm gonna read the names of everyone, not all were able to join us. But from the Commission on the Environment, we had Megan Sixt. From the Finance Advisory Committee, Peter Wilk and Willow Sullivan. From the Library Advisory Committee, Ariel Gray, Tony Campbell, Gail Ortiz, Lisa Steingrube, and Stephen Walsh. Planning Commissioners, Linda Smith, Sam Story, and Susan Westman. And from the Traffic and Parking Commission, Ron Burke, Karen Hanna, Melanie Arao, Molly Ording, Steve Ross, Nels Westman, Willie Case, Doug Tom, and Don Gray, Ron Graves, sorry, Ron.
Molly, thanks for all you, you know, longer than I've been in town, you've been on that committee.
Yeah, thanks too.
Thanks for everything, okay, hopefully we'll be back again.
Thank you.
So, well, everyone who just got their reward reports to the bar downtown, no, you're gonna stay, that's good. So, let's have a report from closed session. Reed?
Yes, we had one item for discussion with the council, and one potential case, significant exposure to potential litigation. Counselor received a status update and took no reportable action.
Thank you very much. Do we have any additions and deletions to the agenda?
None.
Okay, now's the time for a public comment. You have three minutes to give a talk or a comment, as you see fit, on any item that's not on our agenda today. No comments? Bring it back to the board, any City Council or staff comments?
I do.
Oh, Gary.
I just wanted to report out that I attended the League of Cities, I think it was last week, and I really enjoyed myself. City Manager Jamie was able to attend with me, and I was able to learn a lot, so, thank you.
Good for you.
Yeah, thanks.
I have nothing.
You have nothing? I was gonna take your thunder, but I guess not, okay.
I have no thunder.
None? Okay, well, I thought the Chair of the RTC would comment on what RTC just voted on.
Go ahead, you're the City Capitol Representative.
Oh, okay, so, we're going ahead with Phase Two on the RTC. So, that means that the carrier will be able to do commercial, and also plan to do the movement of people, some sort of mass transit option. And that is all to be decided. The main programs that are gonna be worked on are the things that are pertinent to Highway One, merged lanes, bicycle improvements, other signage and signaling improvements and stuff like that, which will have immediate impact on helping to move traffic in this area. So, the other issues with the train, the corridor, and stuff like that, that's gonna take some time. So, that was just determined last week. So, do we have any boards, commissions, appointments?
Yes, we have one. The Art and Cultural Commission met last week and has two recommendations. One is a reappointment of Roy Johnson as the Arts Professional, and then we have Susan McPeak is recommended to join as an at-large member. And so, this is just a concurrence vote.
Okay, so, moving along, we have a consent calendar.
Do we need a vote on the last?
Do you need a motion?
We don't need a vote, oh, yes, we do, excuse me, I'm sorry about that.
I'll move that we appoint Susan McPeak to the Art and Cultural Commission.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any stents, no, okay. So, let's move on to the consent calendar. Any items on the consent calendar that City Council would like to remove and vote on later? Anyone from the public that would like to remove an item from the consent calendar? Seeing none, bring it back to the board, is there?
I'll move this consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, moving along to Item 10, General Government Public Hearings. We have to consider a letter of support to the, for the SoCal Water District, District, Grant Application. So, is there a report from the City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, the item before you this evening is to consider supporting a grant application for the SoCal Creek Water District's Project Pure Water. Project Pure Water, which, General Manager for the Water District will be able to explain far more eloquently than I, was, is essentially a project that would take treated effluent from Santa Cruz, which currently is discharged into the Monterey Bay National Marine Sanctuary, and about 25% of that would be transported back here, given further treatment, and then to the point of pure water, and then injected into the groundwater basin to provide a buffer to prevent further seawater intrusion. So, the item before you today is to authorize the Mayor to sign a letter supporting the District's grant application. I believe the amount is a $50 million grant application, and we have Ron Duncan, General Manager for the Water District, here to answer any questions or provide additional information.
Thank you, Ron.
Yeah, wow, I'm impressed, Jamie, that was a good summary. You did excellent. I wanna thank the council members, I know you've got a lot on your plate, and over the couple of years, you've really put yourself out there to learn about the water issues, meeting with different people and bringing us to your council. Councilmember Brooks was even a graduate of our First Water Academy, so thank you. Big endeavor, especially while you're running for election, that was huge to do double duty like that. It really speaks well of the council here. As you know, we have a big problem, right? We've been branded by the state to be one of the top 21 worst basins in the state, critically overdrafted. Innovative study recently showed us not only a bad case, it's worst-case scenario with seawater intrusion invading our aquifers. So, the district has a solution, Jamie described it well. It says take 25% of the treated effluent that goes out to the Monterey Bay Sanctuary, purify it, recharge the groundwater basin, create an iron curtain so seawater can't come in and ruin our aquifers. A statistical survey that we conducted, valid survey, showed that 77% of the people in the community support recycled water, this type of project, when they're educated about it. A recent survey, or, I don't know how recent, but pretty recent, by Santa Clara Valley Water District, showed that 84% of the people in their community support using recycled water versus taking more from the streams of the groundwater aquifer. So, you have the will of the people behind you, but not only that, the state and federal government is also believes in this project. They've awarded us over $2 million, state and federal combined, and recently, the state was down here to see what our project was about. So, we took them on a field trip, showed them around, took them around Capitola, we have a monitoring well up there, and they said, "We're the model project for this type of endeavor to prevent seawater intrusion." So, they invited us back, they said, "We got money set aside," they actually changed the rules of engagement for the grant, and invited us back to apply for a $50 million grant. So, we're in the midst of that, and so that is the ask in front of you tonight, is a letter of support to help obtain that $50 million, which would translate into lower rates for your customers. And I'm happy to answer any questions, but...
Well, this is the time of questions to Ron. Any questions? I do have a question, in terms of, not the water rates, but in terms of applications for meters?
Mm-hmm.
Would you comment on that, how that might influence, how this program might influence that?
Are you referring specifically to our Water Demand Offset Program? Yes. That's what you're trying to get, okay, sure. So, the Water Demand Offset Program is a program we've had in place since 2003. The Board instituted, and it's a, what it does is it requires new development to offset their projected water use. And it was a balancing act, because the Board knew the aquifer was in trouble, but they know development's important too, so how do you marry the two? And that program was envisioned as a bridge until we get a supplemental supply. So, you know, I think staff's hope, and I think the Board's too, from what I can tell, is once we get a project online or near, you know, to that point where we know it's gonna, you know, it's helping to replenish the aquifer or close to it, that that project would hopefully sunset. It's always, you know, in the presentations I give, it's always a bridge, Water Demand Offset Program here, and a new supply here, and like, the Water Demand Offset Program is a bridge to a new supply, just to get us by.
Okay, so, that helped us, and we might be able to release more water meters for the public and stuff like that. I see this as a very green project, I mean, in terms of water savings, do you have any comments on that?
Yeah, you know, I'm glad you asked that. The way the Board approached this project, we did a community water plan, and we said, "Not what project do you want, but what community values are important to you, are important to the community in a project." And so, they did, they listed six values. One was environmental, one was cost, one was reliability, I won't go into the others. But, this project, Pure Water SoCal, lined up on all, it's at least expensive, we believe it most environmentally sound, I mean, versus taking from, you know, streams or creeks or groundwater or whatever. You're recycling water, so, and it's drought-proof. So, it met on all six of our community values, we used a science-driven approach to see which projects align with those values, and Pure Water SoCal popped out the top on all six.
Would this project have any impact on adjacent water districts? Is there any, you know, working together, like with Santa Cruz or something?
Yeah, we're working together, and really, what we've come to see through the groundwater modeling, a very sophisticated model that is being conducted, and other evidence and data, is that it's not just a one, one-and-done project kind of thing. It's, we're gonna need multiple sources. Santa Cruz has a different problem, they're, they rely all on surface water, so when it doesn't rain, they start to get in a world of hurt, we're all groundwater. So, we believe the science is showing us that we need both. We need some river water, when they have excess, help recharge the aquifer, potentially, they can draw some back, you know, use it as a storage vessel. So, a lot of people seem to think, they fall in love with one project, we have a saying at our office, "Don't fall in love with a project, fall in love with sustainability." And the ideas behind that is just, sometimes when you work on something, that becomes your, you know, what you want, but we try to keep a broad eye. And right now, we do have a project that we're test piling to receive some water from the city of Santa Cruz. So, it's a good, it's a good relationship, and for the effluent, we'll be working with City of Santa Cruz on that too.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I'm gonna ask for any questions from the public, and please come to the front if you have any questions, of Ron or anyone else here. Okay, any questions from staff? Excuse me, City Council?
And, no questions.
Okay, great. So, at this point, we need, okay, one question, sorry.
No, another question, I thought you brought it back, I was gonna make a motion.
Yes, I was just gonna say, time for a motion.
Yeah, I just wanna make a motion to adopt staff recommendation for the, to authorize the Mayor to sign a letter, but before that, I just want to acknowledge Mr. Duncan, thank you for coming and giving us that presentation. And I also want to acknowledge Commissioner Bruce Daniels for going around, I believe he went to each and every one of us and had a conversation and informed us, and I appreciate him making that effort, so thank you.
Yeah, and he's in the back just to provide moral support, so I appreciate that.
You know, I had a good conversation with the day, and I'm sure everybody had one, and that's why we probably have no questions here today, and feel comfortable with this.
Yeah, y'all have always taken time to educate yourselves, and I appreciate that, thank you.
And I'll second the motion, and also extend my appreciations to the District and Ron for bringing this project forth and educating us on the need for it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So, there's been a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, no dissensions, okay, moving along, thank you very much, Ron. And Bruce, I appreciated your explanation also, it was very thorough, thank you. So, moving along to Item 10B, Consider a Contract for Tax Revenue Consulting Services. I believe our Director, Jim, will be giving a report.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers, the next item before you, as you mentioned, is considering a contract for tax revenue consulting services. This comprises, there's, this is comprised of three different elements, sales tax, transit occupancy tax, or TOT, as well as cannabis tax, so I'll just briefly go over each one of those, and then we can, I can take some questions at the end. Sales tax, we've had a consultant that's been providing this service for 17 years. Sales tax is our largest revenue source for the general fund, 49%, so it's real important that we stay on top of that. And it's changing, so, with the increase of online sales and the Wayfair decision, how online sales, sales taxes allocated is changing, so it's really critical that we stay on top of that and make sure that we're receiving the correct allocations. HDL and Avenue are the two vendors that submitted proposals, they're the two largest, I think they're the, maybe the only two that provide this service in the state, and most agencies within California that have a large sales tax base, or have a sales tax base that makes up a large component of their general fund revenue contract with either one of these two firms. And we've been using Avenue, which was formerly Muni Services, since 2001. So, Avenue purchased Muni Services in 2018 and requested that we execute a new contract with them, and we looked at that as an opportunity to issue an RFP, check the market, were there other technologies out there that would improve the service, or could we get better rates? Additionally, we weren't overly thrilled with the reports that we got from Muni Services, so that was another reason that we looked at this as an opportunity to go out and see if there was something better potentially out there. As far as the fees, they're pretty even. Avenue Services was slightly less for the analytics and reporting, and that's the component where they take the sales tax database from the state of California and kind of put it into a readable format, and report back to us on trends and what type of revenue we're seeing. us on trends and what type of revenue we're seeing and what industries and all of that stuff. The audit and discovery is where, if they see when in their reports anomalies, either somebody's way up, way down, new, or dropped off, that could trigger an audit. And if they find new revenue for us, somebody's not paying, they take a percentage of that. They were previously, Avenue was charging us 20% before, and now they've dropped down to 15, but that's what HDL came in at. MGO is an accounting firm that only proposed on the cannabis tax, so I'll cover them at the end. The next one is the transit occupancy tax, or TOT. So, just some quick stats. We have eight hotels or motels within the city. There's six property management companies that have an unknown number of rental properties under their umbrella. So, that's one of the reasons I kind of want to dig into there and make sure all of those are getting captured and reported correctly. And then we have 35 owner-operated rental properties within the city. So, we have a total of right around 50 altogether, I think. No, it's, I'm sorry, it's higher than that. It's closer to 65. Because I think there's about 20 in that second group. And then there's an unknown number of rentals outside of the transit rental overlay zone. So, we don't receive a lot of complaints, and our enforcement is complaint-driven. But we do occasionally get complaints that somebody's renting out property outside of the zone. So, we would like to get people to fall in compliance with our zoning code. If approved, this will be a new service that we have not contracted for in the past. From the staff level, we have done audits. A couple of years ago, my predecessor and the senior accountant audited one of the hotels on 41st Street, actually resulted in a benefit for them. They were overpaying. And I believe the community development department a number of years ago had a intern that spent about three months doing the short-term rental audits. But outside of that, we don't really, we're not really staffed up to do that type of work at the level that we, I think we should be. And our two specific goals are, again, making sure that the TOT is collected by the rental property owners and submitted correctly and accurately, and then compliance with city zoning codes. The breakdown on these fees and the analytics and reporting. So, for Avenue, basically, we would direct them which of those properties to go audit, or how we want, give them an audit plan. We want to do, you know, 25% a year for four years or however that is, and they charge 700 per property. HDL, I can do the same thing for 650 a property, or they will take over the entire program where we don't do anything for 750. But that would be about 50 grand a year. So, I don't think we're going to jump in at 50 grand a year. Probably just do a couple of audits and see what we find, and then kind of go from there. The short-term rental, those fees are paid as a percentage of new revenue, so similar to the sales tax. They have, both firms have software that they can go in and they monitor Airbnb, VRBO, and those types of things, and look for properties that are renting either within the zone and not submitting, or renting their property outside of the zone. And then they let us know about those, and then we can get them in compliance. And it's also, we, on the complaint-driven for the short-term rental, I was talking to the planning department today. And when we get those complaints, we can go out there and talk to those owners and get them to stop. But there's no real penalty at this point. So, we walk away, and three or four days later, they're back up and renting again. So, we want to kind of get a handle, get that under control. And then the last component is cannabis tax. This is a new industry with the passage of Prop 64. Still remains all cash, which causes a lot of concern for PD and finance department. There's two components: compliance inspections where they'll go in and they'll look at inventory management, access control, video surveillance, business records. And then financial audits where they go in and do basically kind of the same thing that our auditors do, but a little more in detail as far as looking at their point-of-sale system, their receipts, making sure their inventories are all accounted for and nothing's disappearing. I think with this one, we definitely wouldn't do any of this fiscal year, because I don't think we'll have any storefronts open. We may or may not have one up and open long enough to do this in fiscal year 1920. I think with the compliance inspections, that's the less expensive portion. A lot of that's going to be handled, at least on the onset, by our police department. So, we probably won't use that, but I wanted it in there so we knew what it would cost if we decided to shift that over. Financial audits, I think we would do one at the, close to the end of their first year of operations, or maybe mid-year pickup point in time. And then depending on how that audit went, we would either continue on an annual basis, or maybe set them up to, you know, three-year or a five-year, or whatever that, depending on how those audits go, would kind of drive how we use this service. And then the fees for that are substantially higher than what they are for the other services. So, analytics and reporting, same type of a thing, where they're just taking the records and reporting back to us. Audit and discovery is when they find things out there. And, I'm sorry, on the audit and discovery, for HDL, that includes one financial and one compliance audit annually. And that's for two storefronts. So, each store is half of that, 14.5. With Avenue, they have a larger upfront as they get all the data loaded in. So, I think part of the reason this is higher, it's new, it's all cash, it's really involved. So, people aren't, the vendors don't have their system all in place. So, they're still building their systems up. So, we may be paying a little bit of a premium for getting in early, but it would be a good thing, I still think, to keep an eye on those stores as they go forward. Before I hit this, council member Story noticed that when he was reviewing it, that the HDL proposal, we were 10 days beyond their 90-day guaranteed proposal. So, I did email the president and CEO of HDL, and they've emailed back that they would honor their proposal and the fees. So, we're okay, the fact that we're over by a few days on that.
Good. Thank you for following up.
Sure. So, in conclusion, the recommended action is to authorize a city manager to execute a three-year agreement for professional tax revenue consulting services with HDL to perform tax revenue consulting services related to sales tax, transit occupancy tax, and cannabis tax. And that's the end of my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions of staff. Sam?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Jim, thanks for speaking about the expense of the cannabis tax, because that kind of jumped out at me. It seemed extremely costly for that particular tax. But I guess in reading their proposal, and it's the new burgeoning business, all cash, I kind of come to accept that. But I didn't, is that fee for the cannabis tax, is that for any number of retail units that we may have? Or for two?
That's for two.
That's for two.
So, if we only had one store, it would be, I think, what, 7250 or 7500?
So, it would be half of that for the first store, and then it would go to that amount. Okay, thank you.
I have a question. So, when we're talking about sales receipts and stuff like that, is there a confidentiality between them and us and the public? How's that go?
So, we have to basically write a letter to the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, which used to be the BOE, and authorize HDL access to the records, to the sales tax records for the businesses that operate within Capitola, which does have confidentiality. So, the CD TFA won't release that data without our authorization, and they're, they have to keep all of that information confidential.
Okay. It's not available to the public, business? Okay, got it. In terms of collecting tax for the cannabis, since it's all cash, how do we deal with that?
It's going to be based on their receipt. So, it'll be similar to TOT in where they'll have to complete, they'll have to file a report of what they sold, what their gross receipts were, and then submit the tax off of that. We do kind of the same thing with the TOT, kind of rely, it's kind of almost an honor system where they tell us the business that they did, calculate the tax, and then we just make sure the math is right, which is kind of why I would like to do some spot audits and just make sure everybody's accurate.
Are we going to get cash? I mean, that's the thing. I mean, can they go to a bank and get a cashier's check? I mean, I just don't know how that works, that's all.
For the business, the cannabis, they could write us checks. We're not all cash. It's just they, because the transactions within the store have to be cash, but they could deposit their money and submit to us.
Somehow, okay. It's just unclear to me. Okay. Jamie, do you have a comment on this?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think one of the key things to think about here is that the sales tax consulting services, we're definitely going to use. You know, it represents 50% of our general fund. It's been a service that we've used extensively in the past to help us chart and track our sales tax and understand how it's potentially going to grow or shrink in the future. The TOT and the cannabis tax, obviously, we don't have a cannabis establishment yet, but we wanted to get somebody on board who was prepared to help us with the audits, should we end up in a position where we did have a business, someone with that level of expertise. How we end up using the cannabis tax auditing services and the TOT auditing services, I think is really going to be contingent upon how HDL performs and what we discover through the course of some of our initial audits and work. So, I guess I would really think about this in sort of two parts. One is, is this is going to be a new partner for us with our sales tax auditing services. And then in addition, we're bringing in some additional resources to help with cannabis if we do get a retailer, and hopefully, an additional resource to help us with the TOT, which I think we could do better moving forward. But this isn't a, this isn't going to be a guaranteed open contract for three years where every business, we're going to execute every single business opportunity that's outlined in it. And so, it will all be subject to budget appropriations that we make every year. I hope that's clear.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Yes.
So, who would decide, once we go into contract, you mentioned that we wouldn't have the consulting firm review all of our hotels and so forth. Who would decide on which ones would be audited? Since we have over 60, we wouldn't obviously afford...
We would direct them. I would probably honestly start with the property management ones, because they're the ones we have the least amount of information on. The hotels seem to be run pretty tight. I would probably put them on a rotating basis. The one that was done by my predecessor was the Fairfield on 41st. So, they did the largest one first. I would probably want to hit each hotel over a three-year period, and then the others kind of see and how those shake out. But it's the property management ones that, we don't really know how many are out there, and I just kind of want to get a handle on that. So, that's probably where I would start. But I would take recommendations from the consultants since that's kind of their expertise.
I would also add that I think that a little bit of the payment history would guide us in terms of the audits. Frankly, that's what triggered the audit that we did several years ago, was that the payment history just didn't quite make sense when you looked at the way the numbers were coming in. And we started asking questions of their management. Their management realized that there was, you know, in the course of their own internal investigation, realized there was possible problems with it. And so, the payment history, I think, is also a bit of a guide, is the payment history, does it make sense when you look at it? Is there a peak in the summer? Does it look like the peak last summer? Are the payments coming in on time? Those kinds of things would be triggers for audits, I think.
And then I had a second just question about, you pointed that we might not look into having them do the inspections for the marijuana tax. And I'm just curious about, would that be, that would be an option in the audit later? I understand that our police department would be doing the initial oversight for it, but would that still be an option in the agreement here?
Yeah, within their fee schedule, they broke it out.
Okay.
We can choose one compliance audit or not. We could choose multiple compliance audits. We could do one financial or zero financial. So, I just chose one compliance and one financial to kind of show what I think would be worst-case.
Right.
But with the compliance audit, that first year, a lot of that stuff, the PD's already going to be looking at. So, I don't know that we need to pay an extra $1,200.
Right, okay. Thank you.
No, no questions? Any other questions? Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask the public if there's any questions from the public. Seeing none, bring it back to the council for a motion?
I'll move staff recommendation.
Second?
Second. I hear a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it passes. Moving on to a 10C.
Mr. Mayor, one quick comment. Jim, I just want to thank you for taking the time to reach out for that RFP, because I think that was a great opportunity for us to take advantage of that. So, thank you for that.
And I do have a question, Jim. If you could come back. Sorry. Should I refer to you as the finance director or as the Capitola City Treasurer?
Finance Director.
Okay. Now, you are the city treasurer, so, okay. So, item 10C, introduction of an ordinance amending the municipal code. And we have a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Before you tonight is an update to our Bicycle and PTD, Personal Transportation Device Ordinance. The current one is from 1951. To say it's outdated is a little bit of an understatement. So, we're moving forward, the biggest change is the change in technology surrounding bicycles. With the new technology of smart bicycles and bicycle shares and scooters, we didn't want to be the next article on the front page of the Santa Cruz Sentinel, saying there's been a scooter drop in Capitola. And so, we've got, we're, tonight, this ordinance is to protect us from that, to make sure that any future bike share or scooter share has a proper contract with the city. And also to update our ordinance, knowing that there's now new technology on how bicycles are parked with dockless technology and GPS systems. And so, we'll be ready. So, some of the work that's been done, this past September, we reached out regarding a future bike share program for the city of Capitola. We launched a survey. There was a lot of support for a future bike share system. The major points that came back in the survey were, let's make sure it's safe and make sure we're prepared in terms of how these bicycles will be parked and mitigate impacts that are often associated with bike shares. And also, making sure that, that we're just prepared. And that the other part of it was the regional component, that there was support for a regional system. So, I'll jump into the ordinance changes. The first was to amend Chapter 10.4, general provisions. It was just to move the sections about bicycles into the bicycle section of the code and to get rid of outdated references. Next, under Chapter 10.4, some of the major components of the changes to the ordinance were to add definitions. So, definitions for the new technology that exist, including personal transportation devices, which include our electronic bikes and our motorized scooters. And also to bring in those new shared components, the shared mobility services. We also, there was, in the outreach that we've done, concern for helmets. And under state law, anyone under the age of 18 must wear a helmet while riding a bicycle. We reference, we have a new reference to the state code in our, in our code. One requirement that has been in our code is that bicycles are prohibited on sidewalks under the new ordinance. It'll state that it prohibits both bicycles and PTDs on sidewalks. Looking into this a little bit further, in all the conversations we've had as staff, there is concern about children and not being able to ride their bicycles on a sidewalk. So, diving into that deeper today, we realize that there is some federal standards that are, recommendations put out by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration stating that the safest place to ride your bike is on the street. But for children under the age of 10, they're not mature enough to make decisions necessary to safely ride in the street. So, therefore, the best practice for children under 10 would be to allow them to ride on your sidewalks. So, with that, there, at your direction, we could modify the drafted code to say, "No person shall ride a bicycle or PTD on a sidewalk other than children less than 10 years of age." So, simple fix for that, to make sure that we're not pushing our little four-year-olds out into the busy streets. So, another is, other changes that occurred is that bicycle racks in the public right-of-way will require approval of the public works department. And also, one gap that we had in our code before is we've had pedicab operators come to the city, ask how they could operate within the city, and we haven't had any type of system within our code. And we've, we now have a new system that they would have to come in, get a business license, and if they wanted to operate on city property, also to have an encroachment permit. And also added to the code, which I mentioned, is new standards for shared mobility services. So, if we were to have a bike share company come in or a scooter share, that it would have to be authorized through a, they'd have to have a business license and a contract with the city that's authorized by the city council. So, that would come to you for authorization before they could operate. We've also added new removal and impoundment standards. So, in the situation where somebody leaves a bike where it doesn't belong, or if there were a scooter drop-off to the city, we have a means to enforce, to impound those, and not at our expense. So, the big changes, and this was in all the conversations that we had before... So, the big changes, and this was in all the conversations that we had before our different committees, was we really need to focus in on the parking regulations. So the new parking standard that's drafted requires that all bicycles and PTDs be parked in a bicycle rack, and then with an exception that if there is not a bicycle rack or bicycle facility within 50 feet of the trip end, then a bicycle may be parked on the sidewalks, but in compliance with the following. So, the first is that the device has to be locked, and that was a key... I met with Claire, the, she's involved with transportation at the city of Santa Cruz. So she's had a lot of experience with what's been going with bike share there. And she said, "It's essential that you make sure that they have to be locked to something that's fixed to the ground." So, the device is locked in upright position to an object fixed to the ground, and that would, and I'd like to fix the language to say, "Including a sign pole or a light pole," because I don't want to leave it open to etc. So, and then another standard that is also included that is that in the central village, the sidewalk must maintain five feet of clearance for pedestrian circulation, and all other parts of the city, it would be four feet, which is consistent with ADA. Also, free-locking bikes shall be parked in a manner that complies with this section and is not hazardous to pedestrians, vehicular traffic, or property, and that no person shall lock, park, stand, or lock a bike or a PTD to the street tree, plant, or box, or public bench. So, really, those free-locking bikes, that they're required to follow all the regulations of a normal bike. So my recommendation tonight is to approve the first reading of the ordinance, amending Municipal Code Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, to amend Chapter 10.04, to repeal Chapter 10.44, and then to adopt the new Chapter 10.44 for bicycles and personal transportation devices. And I'm available for any questions.
Any questions of the staff?
I have a quick question.
Kristin.
I just want a confirmation. I've had some questions come to me about whether or not we are actually approving a bike-sharing service tonight. And I had said no, but I just wanted to publicly confirm that that is not what's happening right now.
That is not what's happening.
Correct, thank you.
Yeah, on the, on the, how they're parking, I mean, you go back to the first picture, there's that bar that comes out on the jump bikes, and a pretty substantial bar. Will PD or will Public Works have an override for that? Or what's, if somebody, if a bike is parked and it blocks something, do we have any, is there any built-in mechanism how we...
So, you can actually pick up the bike from the back and move it, even though it's locked? They're extremely heavy, but you can move it.
I'm just saying, if it's parked someplace where it's obviously an obstruction, somebody, you know, parks it in some inappropriate place, I know that the company can override that lock. I just wondered if PD or Public Works, what would be their mechanism to move a bike that was locked?
So within the contract, we'll have a specific time, amount of time in which they have to respond to our calls, but that's a great question. I can find out if there's actually a code that we could get, because it would be very helpful.
Right, I mean, if somebody parks their car in an obvious place, we have it towed immediately. And in this case, I don't want to wait six hours, which they may think is a quick response to remove something. And I'm just wondering, there's got to be a way to override that and, just, if you're even just going to look into it.
Yeah, and another solution would be for Public Works to have its own passcode to, just to unlock it as a user and move the bike, so.
Yeah, I mean, somehow in this, if there was a contract with some agencies, there would have to be some, I don't see why there would be a problem giving that to Public Works or PD or whoever would be that.
Yeah, I think ultimately, when we do bring a contract for jump bikes, I think we're going to want to look very carefully at the provisions around improperly parked bikes and how those are reported and dealt with. Sure. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Thank you, Mayor. On the old Section 10.44, there used to be, or there are three sections pertaining to licensing of bicycles, which are being eliminated, and that's probably a good thing for private individuals. But a couple of questions. One, I recall one of the reasons why we had implemented those sections, or one useful part of it, was that people could register their bikes with the police department, and then if they were stolen, there was a mechanism for kind of finding the rightful owners, because they were registered bicycles. Will we still be able to do that? Or are we getting rid of any possibility of doing that? And my second question is, shouldn't the shared bicycles or the jump bikes, won't they be licensed or registered? Will have some record of what bicycles are in our community? And how will that be handled? Will that be handled through the contracting process, since we no longer have an ordinance requiring licensing?
So for the bike share question, that would be managed through the contract. So we would have a set amount of bikes that would be for Capitola, and then we would just make sure that inventory exists. The licensing of the individual bikes would be complex within a regional system, because some trips will start in Capitola and end in Santa Cruz, while other trips would start in Santa Cruz and in Capitola. So the individual numbers for each bike wouldn't work, but the, through the contract, they'll be required to keep, to maintain a certain amount of bikes within Capitola. And they rebalance them each night, and they'll, you know, move bicycles around and get them back to their communities, so.
Well, would that mean that we may not be able to track, you know, particular bicycles? And, you know, if they were involved in an incident, identify who the rider may have been? So that's what I, and, yeah, it's regional, but I assume the city of Santa Cruz maintains their list of registered bicycles, and so that they can identify, you know, each particular bicycle, and then ultimately who the users may have been?
Within the smart technology, they will be able to, each bicycle has its own identification, and they can track the different users. So if it's parked improperly, they can charge a fee to that person, send out a warning. So they do have a, everything's tracked individually. So we could, if there were an issue, we would be able to track it through the individual bike.
Okay. So I think we have a comment from the chief.
And I think Mayor Bertrand and Councilmember Story, I think I might be able to provide some information with regard to your first question, any bicycle licensing historically. You're right, Santa Cruz, the city of Santa Cruz maintains a bicycle licensing program, albeit a few number of people take advantage of that. Capitola residents can license their bikes if they choose to in the city of Santa Cruz, and that's been the case for many years. We have licensed over the last 10-plus years, less than five bicycles on an annual basis.
Okay.
So, that doesn't mean, however, that if we were conducting an investigation for a stolen bike, of course, our goal is to recover the bike on behalf of the victim. The most beneficial piece of information with that bike is the serial number that I think is stamped on just about every bike anymore. And that's been the case because there have been so few people who take advantage of licensing bicycles through municipalities. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, it does. Thank you, Chief. If I may, I have a couple of more questions. One, under the new Section 10.44 under group operation, it basically says that bicycle riders, riders of bicycles or personal transportation devices must ride in single file, except on paths or parts of a roadway set aside for the exclusive use of bicycles and PTDs. I was wondering how that intersects, because I notice sometimes we've seen signage that says that bicycles may use full lanes. And I'm not aware that we have posted roads of that nature, where bicycles may basically take up the full lane, maybe side to side abreast. And my understanding that that's legal for them to do that. How does that interface with this section that requires them to ride in a single file?
Let me have the chief respond to this. Thank you.
Mayor Bertrand, Councilmember Story. Let me first talk about the California Vehicle Code and the language in the code with regard to your question. Where a roadway has a designated bicycle lane, it is very clear in the California Vehicle Code that bicycles shall use that bicycle lane, with the exception of four instances. And I'll read them to you from the code so that we're clear. When the bicycle is overtaken in passing another bicycle vehicle, pedestrian within the lane, or about to enter the lane, if the overtaking and passing cannot be done safely within the bike lane, that's one instance. When preparing for a left turn at an intersection or into a private road or driveway, they can be outside of the bicycle lane. When reasonably necessary to leave the bicycle lane to avoid debris or other hazardous conditions. And when approaching, when approaching a place where a right turn is authorized. So that's clear in the vehicle code. The vehicle code has no language with regard to bicycles riding in a group versus bicycles riding single file, etc. If that answers your question.
Well, I guess, you know, those incidents where you see signs posted that says, "Bikes may use full lanes," how does that come into play, or when is that allowed or authorized? Is it necessary that that be posted, that there be that signage before they can do that, so we can make that distinction?
I'm not familiar with the signage, but I'll make an assumption that that signage is necessary. When a bike is on a roadway, the vehicle code treats that bicycle just like it does a vehicle, and the rider shall obey all vehicle code laws.
You're right. Old San Jose Road has those signs, I mean, all the way down. Perfect example where it does say, "Bicycle may use entire lane," and bicycles, what they do, they'll just pull out in front of you and they're allowed to use that lane, apparently. I mean, that's what the sign says.
I think our Public Works Director can shed some light on this. He has experience with the sharrows and this sort of, this sort of incident.
So we do have those signs in Capitola, actually, coming down Wharf Road, down the hill. We have them there. I think they may also be on Capitola Avenue coming down from the highway. And they're intended to empower the bike to take the traffic lane, because it's a place where there's no bike lanes, and where they are able to ride and take the lane, and it's kind of an advisory more to cars than it is to bicycles. It goes both ways. It's always advised, cars, that you're going to see bikes in the travelway there. So that's the purpose of the signs. Whether or not they can ride single file or not, I think that's another issue. But that's the purpose of the signs, and we do have them in Capitola.
Okay. Well, I just think we need to be aware, I mean, this seems to require that all bicycles ride in single file. But my experience and my observation is that when they're allowed to use the full lane, that they won't. And if there's multiple riders, you know, sometimes there'll be abreast in that lane. So, but I'm, I mean, we will just have to, I think, exercise discretion in view of this code and those situations where they are allowed to ride abreast or two across or so.
And it might be worth mentioning that the vehicle code does make it very clear that it allows local jurisdictions to introduce code that would be more restrictive than the vehicle code. So, for instance, a code that suggests single-file riding in a, on the roadway or in the bicycle lane.
Okay. Well, thank you. I won't belabor that any further. I did have, I guess, one other minor point or question I'd like to raise, and our old code referenced that the traffic regulations apply to persons riding bicycles or animals, and we're now deleting animals? And I know it never happens, or rarely ever happens, and, but I recalls, I think one time, we had a cowboy ride through town, and just this past December, I saw a donkey on Capitola Beach. And so, I mean, are we eliminating the reference to animals on the premise that it never happens or so rarely happens? We don't need to enforce the traffic regulations for, well, mostly horseback riders?
That's correct. So we did think this one through and said, you know, there may be the off-chance that someone rides a horse through town, but most likely it's going to be associated with a parade or a special event. So, at this time, we thought it would be appropriate to remove the reference to animals, but it is, they would have to follow the rules and regulations of the road if they were on them, and by having it in the code, it protects us from that. So if you so choose, we could leave that in the code.
Well, I mean, I don't know, Chief, how you feel about removing animals from following, you know, the traffic regulations, if they should be in town, and...
They have to signal.
Animals follow traffic regulations better than humans do. I have no problem removing the language from the code. I agree with Katie that it would be a special event where typically an animal would be in the roadway and having to follow a specific...
Okay. Then that, fine, that answers my concern. Thank you, Mayor. I have no other, no further questions.
Any other questions? I have a question, sort of a follow-up on what Sam brought up in terms of group rides. I think we all know that we have a number of group rides that come through Capitola, Saturday morning or Sunday morning, I forget which, you know, there's many times that I've been downtown, and a whole slew of 10 or 20 people go through. So what this is saying, that we're not going to allow that anymore. And I sort of have a problem with that. I have nothing against group rides. They seem to be fairly well-organized. There's Santa Cruz Bike Club, they might have a group ride that comes through. So, is there some way we could get around this so that we don't prohibit this?
You know, I would suggest that you think of it as a means to, for us to police your non-traditional group ride. If ever there was a group that wasn't acting and following the, that wasn't being, you know, following the regular rules of the road and they were being mischievous, we'd have a way in which to say, actually, we have a regulation within the code that as group riders, you're supposed to ride single file. And I don't think the intent is to pull over the Saturday morning group of 30 that we see go, that probably start off in West Cliff and end up in Aptos and turn, you know, so, but if you don't want it in there, it could be removed. It's really a standard, when we drafted the update, I actually took language from, the starting point was the Santa Cruz code, which I think they have more issues with maybe people that aren't always following the rules when riding with, as a group. So this was taken from there, and if we don't have that issue here in Capitola, then we could remove this section. It was just for those instances when a group needs to be talked to, if they're...
So I've seen what you're referring to in Santa Cruz, and it can be quite wild. And so I could understand why Santa Cruz has that rule about no group rides. It's quite wild, to tell you the truth. And so they do need some way to deal with it. At least in Capitola, I haven't seen anything like that, and I do know that we have fairly well-organized groups that come through Capitola, and I don't want to make that impossible for them. So I would not want to support the group ride operation. I don't know what other council members feel.
Would it be reasonable to have the wording say something along the lines of, "All people or all persons shall take reasonable measures to ride in single file, except..."
I'd rather go to the public and then bring it back, and then we can have a discussion. So if you want to...
I take Ed's call. This is beyond the question and answer. Okay. So at this point, I'd like to open to the public for comment. Thank you.
Good evening. Councilmembers, mayors, I'm David Fox. I live up at 320 McCormick. I've lived there for 42 years. I want to thank staff for everything that's done in writing this new thing. But at the same time, I would like to point out, you're talking about doing a jump bike thing. Do not sign their boilerplate contracts. Keep in mind the city of Capitola. I've been to many places, take Pacific Beach, and their bikes are littered everywhere.
Yeah.
And you can't lay it on the police department to take care of this. Their police department down there is just overwhelmed with complaints. They have to take care of their normal police business, not taking care of stupid bicycles left on corners. So when you come up to approving this contract, keep in mind the city and the people. We're a pedestrian town. We, everybody loves Capitola because it's so pedestrian. So, just look out for our citizens. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. And, you know, according to what you just said, if I may, there's no sidewalks on your street, and, yeah, I mean, so where are you going to put it, in front of someone's yard? I mean, yeah. I mean, yeah, totally understand. Right. Okay. Karen, hi.
Good evening, Karen Hannah. And I know this is just the ordinance, so I, I'm just expressing some concerns like Mr. Fox. I totally 100% agree with him that this contract is going to be tricky because we already have a problem with bicycles on the sidewalk down in the village. And, you know, there, I don't, there's no, there appears to be no way to enforce that. So if we're going to encourage visitors and people who aren't familiar with the village to, to come down and ride into the village, I think that Capitola is one, and I'm, you know, I'm a cyclist, I ride to work every day. I really know the roads in Santa Cruz County, and I think Capitola Village is one of the most dangerous places to ride a bike if you don't know what you're doing. My daughter fell on Monterey Avenue off her bike, broke her jaw. I don't think any of you remember Dennis Noonan, who was a merchant in the village for quite a long time. He knocked out all his front teeth coming down Cliff Avenue. I mean, it, you know, there, you can't get into this village without going down a hill. And if you don't have a helmet, I mean, I even brought my helmet tonight, you know, I mean, don't leave home without it, is my, my theory. So I think that it's, it's a little different than Santa Cruz, and I, and I think it's worrisome. But I know you're going to have public hearings on that, and we'll address all that at that time. Even the issue of, you know, under 10 years old, you can ride on the sidewalk. It's mayhem down there after the junior guards get out, sometimes after school's out. The kids are all over the sidewalks down there. And if you really do have a young child, you know, five or six years old, and the parents are riding, well, the parents are going to be in the street with cars in between, and the kids are going to be on the sidewalk. Anyway, we already have a big problem down there, and so if, if and when you get ready to be looking at that contract, I hope that you look at it carefully. The merchants are very worried about who do we call when there's a bright red bike parked in front of the store for all day, or two days, or whatever. And I agree, the police department is not in a position to be responsive to, to every one of those phone calls. So, I don't know. I don't know if we can be the first city that actually comes up with some answers for some of these problems, but I, I think it's worrisome. But I approve of the change, of making the changes so that they don't come as a complete surprise. So I'm supportive of that, of the changes. I just want to have as much notice and as much information about the possibility of the jump bikes coming to town. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, I bring it back to the council for a motion? I was talking a little bit about the operation of group bikes, and you did have a comment, Kristin, and I think we left it at that. I still have a problem with prohibiting group rides. So that's sort of my stance on that. Any comments from the...
I have a comment. Yeah, this is, I just, this is just, we're just trying to adopt an ordinance, okay? There's no bike program, so be clear on that. And we're just working over the language, because obviously there will be many hearings and bigger crowds, and we start talking about that. You know, it, it's kind of a mixed bag, because what we're doing, I think, I appreciate all the comments by the police chief, because what we have to keep in mind first and foremost is the vehicle code, because bicycles fall under the vehicle code. And I'm totally against removing any consideration for the group ride, because there's no special exemption to the vehicle code. If the group ride's coming through there, they don't own the road, okay? I, I think that they should conform to the vehicle code. I've personally seen a group of 40 motorcycles come into the village, and they all of a sudden assume that because the first bike has stopped, that all the rest of them can just go right on through the stop sign. And I know the chief would tell me that that's not consistent with the vehicle code, but it, but do we enforce that? Probably we don't. I mean, it's something that happens, they go through, and it's probably quicker for all 40 of them to go through. But I don't think that we should be making exceptions to encourage a group to come down. You know, if they come down as a group and they do their, we see the ride where they come down, I think that most of them are prudent riders, and they're going to exercise that. But as far as adopting an ordinance, the ordinance needs to be consistent with the vehicle code. So I'm for the single file, staying in the bike lane. If, if the sign is already there, that's posted, that says may use full lane, well then I think that's already a provision for them to use a full lane. I think that, you know, part of the vision of the RTC is we're trying to get people out of their cars and on, into their bikes, and, and actually make the, the village a user-friendly place. And so I'm not trying to discourage bicycles by any means, but I, I think it's very important that they need to follow the laws. And being consistent with that, I think we should leave the language in that was added about 10-year-olds. Unfortunately, I don't want to encourage any bicycle to be on the sidewalk, but I don't want to go against federal regulations with what's required. So I was okay with that language that was added. Other than that, all the language that was in there, I was fine with.
Any other comments? Yvette, Kristin, Sam?
Mr. Mayor, sorry. Based on some of the public comment about the children under 10 on the sidewalk, you, we may not want to include the village in that exception. The village sidewalks are quite congested, and we already don't allow skateboarding in the village. And I'm imagining an eight, nine-year-old riding their bike down Esplanade. And in the town I grew up in, in the downtown, you couldn't bike on the sidewalk regardless of your age, just due to the congestion of pedestrians. So, and no staff suggested the, providing the exception for under 10, we may also want to carve out the village. Just wanted to toss that out based on some of the comments that we heard from the public, and thinking about sort of the level of congestion we see in the summer. I'm not sure that the...
What's the legality of that, if it's in conflict with federal law?
So, to be clear, that, that wasn't federal law, that was federal guidance from the NTSB. So it's, the, the NTSB, they'll look at all sort of data and kind of provide best practices, if you will. And that's basically their advice is, in general, sidewalks are not considered a safe place to ride a bike, except for children under 10, and their data shows that that can be a safer place.
If it's not allowed, then I'll retract that. I mean, I, I don't, don't want to encourage bikes on the sidewalk. I thought it was, we were being compliant with the federal law. If it's just a suggestion, I would say, or I agree with you 100% absolutely, we don't need any bicycles on the sidewalk. So I would strike that, I would be for striking that language.
So what I was suggesting was, you know, maybe in Cliffwood Heights, the sidewalk is an appropriate place for an under 10-year-old, but in the village itself...
That, I'm totally fine with what you just said, that language, just village-specific.
Can you define village?
You know, the way we've defined village in the past for the skateboarding ordinance is effectively the train tracks at Monterey and here on Capitol Avenue, and then the top of the hill at Cliff. The train tracks effectively at Wharf, Cap Ave, Monterey, and then the top of the hill at Cliff.
Anything on the B side of the train, train?
You cross the tracks, you're in the village.
Yeah, got it. Okay. Sam?
Can I, yeah, I'm just, that definition, I'm, I'm a little concerned, and I get it down in the village proper, in front of the stores. But for kids that are riding down Monterey, which there's a sidewalk there, I think young children should be able to use the sidewalks instead of going down in the street, on that particular street. And so, and, you know, on Cliff, I mean, there aren't sidewalks there in any event until you get down to, closer to Stockton Bridge. So I, I don't know that that's an issue, but I would like to see if we're going to carve out this exception, that we keep Monterey, that hill down Monterey, out of the exception so that little kids can use that sidewalk.
Maybe we should come up with what, a pure definitive area for what the village, because it comes up very often, and we always are ambiguous about what we call it. So maybe this is a great starting point for finally defining it.
Yeah. Because I would add that the bridge, Stockton Bridge, should be another place for 10-years-old and under 2 to cross over, because...
Yeah, I mean, in thinking about sort of the, the spirit of what we're trying to do, it would seem to me that, I have a map up here on the screen, it would seem to me that, that the place where we wouldn't want anyone riding on the sidewalk is the Esplanade, Capitol Avenue between Stockton and Monterey.
Not all Stockton.
And maybe not on, maybe not on Stockton, and that may be it.
Can Steph come back with a definition for us to consider?
Sure, sure. The question is, can we get through this as a first reading without trying to define it?
The idea of kids on, on either sidewalk or on the streets, if we could come up with a definite, you know, Karen came up with, with something that's actually a very real thing. It's mayhem there, especially after junior guards.
I don't think we should be worried about the first reading. I think we should be worried about finally defining what the village is, and taking this opportunity to take the time and direct staff to go back and come back, and we should nail this down, because you know what? It's been very ambiguous for a long time what the village is.
Could we tonight then just say the Es, we can add the Esplanade Village? I mean, Esplanade. I mean, that seems to be where we're seeing the most impact of foot traffic, and everyone seems to agree that that's really where we want not to see little ones on their bikes on, on the sidewalks.
Yes, we could add the language that it does not include, that they'd be prohibited along the Esplanade.
Capitol Avenue.
And it would probably make sense to also include Capitola Avenue and that section of Monterey headed towards Esplanade Park.
Right. So that...
And Stockton. This short piece between Esplanade and Capitola Avenue on Stockton Avenue. That's, would be my recommendation of the...
Would people feel comfortable with that for the time being? Because what Ed brings up is sort of a definition of the village at large, which could be a little bit more, like, people want to be in the village as opposed to just, you know, something close to the village, so...
Defining the village, we do have, you know, within the zoning code and the general plan, we've got the Central Village as a mixed-use village within our general plan. It's very defined within the general plan land use map. We also have the Central Village District, or it's now the mixed-use village under the new zoning code. So there's two areas that we define it in terms of land use for. This is a, a different exercise, you know, in terms of skateboards, we've defined the village as exactly what Jamie had stated previously. So it's really for a bicycle, if we want people to be able to cross the sidewalk along for Stockton Bridge and to get into the village, I think it, it's different than an exercise of just clearly defining the village. It's where can bicycles travel? Where can a nine-year-old, where, where do they have to walk their bicycle through the village? Should they walk their bike over the Stockton Bridge, or down the hill? It's, it's, so if we want to treat them just like a skateboard.
Okay. Ed, comment?
I think we, I think this is a great opportunity for us to be consistent. Okay, I don't know whether we're trying to resolve this right now. We obviously brought up something that there's some controversy on, and I think that the skateboard ordinance and the bicycle ordinance should be consistent. Why would we want to try to impose two separate ambiguous ordinances, okay? It's hard enough for us to, for the PD to enforce any kind of a skateboard ordinance, and now we're going to talk about bikes on the sidewalk, and we're going to say, well, no, Stockton is okay up to the bridge, but why would we make it confusing? Why don't we take the, take, take a step back, come back with a recommendation, and come up, have police department weigh in, and, you know, do we want, how far do we want them going up Monterey? How far do we, do we want them going to the Trestle? Do we want to assume the Trestle? I don't think we should be just trying to just, you know, throw in ideas right now. I think that staff should bring us back some, some good information.
Okay. City Council, can we just go along with what Ed said and come back with a recommendation for later that they've actually thought through? And we're not going to parse it out right now, it's just going to take too much time. Is that agreeable with everyone?
Do we have time to continue this item, to work on what Ed was talking about? Yeah, so...
The, the number one pressing issue really is the potential scooter dump in Capitola. Our existing code does provide the Public Works Director with the authority to remove scooters. It's strengthened in the proposed code, so I, I think that we do have some wiggle room. The urgency to bring it forward was to help make it very clear that if we did have a scooter dump, we could impound the scooters. I don't think we're wide open without it, so I do think we could extend it two weeks. And I think, I, I think that's probably a good choice, because I think it does deserve some thought, you know, thinking about where's the smoking ban, where's the skateboard ban, where should we say that there's no bikes on the sidewalk? I think it deserves a little bit of thought. Should they all be the same, or is there a logical reason why they should be different? So we can work with that, Steph.
If it was June or May, and when summer was here, I'd be worried about a scooter dump. It's not bothering me right now.
Okay. So, you know, I think Yvette's suggestion was a good one, just, you know, at least start at the normal, what we think of the village as, and then go from there. But you're going to come back with something, and we'll think about it in two weeks, okay? I'd like to also include something about bike ride, group bike rides. I am very concerned about that. I agree with Ed that there are cases where we don't want to see, like, tons of motorcycles come through town, and what that may entail. I think the city of Santa Cruz does have a particular type of problem with group rides. I mean, it's quite rowdy, I've seen it on multiple occasions. Generally speaking, we have very well-organized group rides that come through here. They may not be clubs, but they're definitely organized and been going on for years. So I'd like some more thought about that, and I think Ed's point is good. It should be consistent with the state California law. I think everyone on this board would agree with that. So I'd like some definition of that, and how we may deviate from that. The police chief did say that we have the option to be stricter, so that would be on the, on the pocket for us.
I have a quick comment. If I'm reading this correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, we could still move forward with the section 10.04. It's just 10.44 that we're having concerns about, correct? So we could still move forward with a motion to, sorry, I'm going to go back to staff, staff recommendation here.
Would you like to make a motion?
Oh, well, that's what I'm asking. I'm asking if that's something that, that, if I'm correct in understanding, we could still approve the first reading of the ordinance, amending municipal code Title 10, Vehicles in Traffic, amending Chapter 10.04 general provisions, and then leave it at that, correct? Because it's 10.44 that has the issues about bicycles on the sidewalk?
Correct.
Okay. So is that, are we okay with that?
I'm not sure what we would gain by bifurcating, you know, the particular ordinances, and passing one now and waiting on the others.
Well, the only thing they're concerned about is the, is the dumping of the bikes. And I don't know if what we would, if what Councilmember Peterson is suggesting would help that, if, I mean, I...
And part of the change is actually moving stuff from 10.04 to 10.44. And so if we don't do that, then I'm kind of confused, I'm kind of confused moving forward. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, it probably makes sense to move it, to look at it all at one time, so that, so 10.04 is still in place right now, you're not supposed to ride bicycles on the sidewalk, and then once the 10.44 is adopted and all this information moves into it.
Okay. Never mind, I would take that back.
I'd like to make a motion that we continue this item to the next regularly scheduled meeting of the City Council, for the staff to work on the various issues that we've raised here this evening.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second. So moved?
And if...
No. Sam?
Additional discussion. I, I would like that, I mean, I would like, you know, we're, now, on the sidewalk issue, instead of just looking at the village, ask staff to also look at other parts, I mean, because this is a comprehensive, city-wide ordinance. Look at other locations that we maybe haven't thought of, where it, you know, may be appropriate for children to ride on the sidewalk, and may be appropriate not. And so, that, that's my only request, so...
So there's been a motion, a second, and open for comments? Okay, I do have one comment that I've been holding back on. We're a part of the Safe Routes to School program, and we've been trying to work with the SoCal School District, in conjunction with them, to make sure that more kids ride their bikes to school. And I just happen to live across the street from New Brighton, and I've noticed since this program's happened, that more and more kids are taking bikes to school, and they're coming from all over the city, from what I can tell. So in the, in the vein of what Sam just said, I, I think this is something kids could be funneling from all over the place. I know they come off of Hill Street, for instance, they're coming over the Highway One Bridge. So keep that in mind, I think that's important.
And New Brighton, being a middle school, students are going to be 10 and up.
Right, it is 10 and up. You're absolutely right on that. But this is a phenomenon for a lot of kids, not just Sam. You're absolutely right about that, yes. No kid at New Brighton is 10 and up. Okay. Okay. So there's a motion and a second? Who seconded? You did, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So that gets us back to adjourn this meeting. Thank you very much for coming.